Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, you have blessed this community with abundance, and with thankful hearts we express our gratitude. You have created us with opportunities to serve other people in their need, to share together in respect and affection, and to be faithful in the responsibilities we have been given. May all that we do this day be acceptable in your sight. Amen.
Okay, before we begin, we have a few changes. First is to strike item four A, the employee of the fur. And we are going to add item seven D, this position surplus property from E nine one one. Under discussion items, we're going to add item nine A, introduction of state budget contingency. Are there any other changes or modifications?
Mr. Chairman, we had nine B about Spectra Energy.
Okay.
And we want that as discussion item about the survey and project for Spectra Energy.
Okay. All right. I look for a motion to approve these items.
Still moved as modified.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, on to the consent agenda, I'm gonna get a motion for that.
Still moved.
Motion second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Add one to the public appearances. First thing, then repeat business spotlight, Ned Purcell of Purcell's Custom Firearms.
Thank y'all for inviting me to be here. I'm Ned Purcell with Purcell's Custom Firearms, just a little gunsmith shop right across the way over there. We do repairs, restorations, custom builds, which is not as glorious as it sounds. It is mostly taking pre-produced parts and then assembling them or hand fitting them till you have a custom-built weapon to your specifications. We could do the ground-up builds, but that's usually prohibitively expensive. We also do a good bit of restorative work anywhere from old Civil War weapons to World War II collectibles to granddaddy's old shotgun you just wanna look nice and hang on the wall with a fireplace. We have a good bit, a lot of the business now is shifted into internet sales. There's an online auction site called Gun Broker. I do it, I'd like to do more repair, that's what I enjoy doing, so I try and keep the sales business largely consignment. If you have something you want me to sell, you bring it to me, I list it online. Which also allows me to cover the entire country instead of just Orange County, and it provides a fairly good draw, brings people in. I just, the more expensive items, people will usually drive down to pick up. I just sold a rather high-dollar shotgun, the guy's driving all the way from North Carolina to come get it, to avoid UPS. And it also advertises the repair business, people will see that it's a gunsmith shop, and I've got customers as far away as Montana that are repeat business from selling them things online for their repairs. That's about it.
You repair old ball and cap?
Yes, sir, anything.
He worked on one of them. Can you make parts, or do you have sources that can custom make?
We can make them in-house, yes, sir. Generally, I try and find them, as I said, it's just extremely expensive to make them. I mean, some things, it has got a lot of sentimental value and they want it done, so I'll do it. I will generally make a best effort to find it somewhere pre-manufactured because the labor time involved in a one-off that you have to reverse engineer, meaning all I have is broken pieces that I've gotta sit down and build a diagram from the ground up to make, it's doable, but you've got a lot of man-hours in literally just blueprinting time, not even counting the machining time. And I don't use CNC equipment, I have a mill and a lathe, but they're all hand-drawn. I mean, I have DROs, which is the digital readout, but I have to do all of the mechanics by hand, so it involves a lot of rough cut and then a lot of hand filing, so it's a lot of time.
And I'm here to attest, you can buy knives from him and they are very sharp. I still have the scar on my finger, so...
Grab that side with the handle.
Stay away from the pointy end.
One of the pointy end, that guy was blades.
Thank y'all very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next that takes us to the presentation of resolutions, recognizing the 100th anniversary of Virginia Cooperative Extension. And Mr. Frame will be directing these from here. Make sure we get Cooperative Extension. Okay. This is a resolution honoring the centennial of the Smith-Leber Act, establishing cooperative extension. Whereas the Smith-Leber Act of nineteen fourteen established the Cooperative Extension Service, a state-by-state national network of extension agents to extend the university-based research and knowledge to the people in the counties. And whereas the Cooperative Extension System is a nationwide educational network that is a collaboration of federal, state, and local governments in Virginia Tech and Virginia State University, the state's land-grant universities. And whereas the mission of the Cooperative Extension System is to disseminate research-based information on topics as varied as nutrition and health, youth development, agriculture, horticulture, animal husbandry, small business, and personal finance. Every U.S. state and territory has a central state extension office at its land-grant universities and county offices staffed by professionals. And whereas Cooperative Extension of Orange County serves its residents through agents, staff, and volunteers, providing educational programs and research to meet the needs of the county. And whereas for a hundred years, the Smith-Leber Act has stimulated innovative research and vital educational programs for youth and adults through progressive information delivery systems that improve lives and shape the nation. And whereas Cooperative Extension educational programs in the areas of family and consumer sciences, agricultural and natural resources, 4H youth development, and community viability annually benefit farmers, landowners, families, and youth in Orange County. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this thirteenth day of May, two thousand fourteen, that the Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes the hundredth anniversary of the Smith-Leber Act that established cooperative extensions and honors and thanks all the agents, staffs, and volunteers, past, present, and future of Virginia Cooperative Extension of Orange County, that serve residents of all ages and backgrounds, and that all residents continue to grow in awareness and support and reap the benefits of the programs and services provided by Virginia Cooperative Extension. Signed and sealed this thirteenth day of May, two thousand fourteen, S. Teal Goodman, Chairman, Orange County Board of Supervisors. We get the opportunity to see some of the things that Steve does here. He really's got some great programs, we've seen some great things that he's doing with youth and all the other things. I don't rely on these things, because I'm not a farmer, but I've learned more about these meetings, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all you're doing for the county.
Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
I have about sixty-second history up here for y'all, if y'all would indulge in that. It won't take any longer than that, but just some key dates that might be of interest when we looked up the history. The first demonstrator agent, which were soon-to-be county agents, was in nineteen oh six, T.O. Sandy in Burkeville, Virginia. Then with, that was so successful, and normally what they did early on, it was a very respected farmer that were these first demonstration agents. Nineteen oh nine, the first extension work in Orange County was done, and that was by W.C. Shackleford. He was known as having one of the best farms in Albemarle County, and his nephew is a farmer that I still work with in Albemarle County, Corky Shackleford, that some of you might know. Now Corky rents out his farm there, but it was his uncle who was the first agent that did work in this area. He served twenty-one counties, and he actually died on the job in a hotel fire in nineteen forties, early forties, around forty or forty-one, training another agent. The other significant date was, of course, nineteen fourteen, and that's what we're celebrating today, is the one-hundredth anniversary, the passage of the Smith-Leber Act. And what that did was provide federal funding and quickly expand it into cooperative extension nationwide. At that time, the universities were selected for land-grant universities, and there were two universities in the state that were interested. One is down the road in Charlottesville, I can't quite remember the name of that one, but it does have Virginia as part of the name. And the other one was Virginia Polytech Institute and State University, which is Virginia Tech. Extension quickly expanded after that. The first agents that served this area served multi-counties, like I said, W.C. Shackleford. The first county agent was Breton, E.V. Breton, was the first county agent. In this county, he was hired in nineteen seventeen. He had a farm, Monk Sanford said, just down fifteen, just passed him down fifteen, and he was the first one to do work. Another key person after that was the next, the second county agent in the state, in Orange County, and that was T.T. Curtis. And T.T. Curtis worked with the Board of Supervisors and was one of a number of counties that tried to get funded and ultimately succeeded in getting a research station out here in the early nineteen forties. Since then, it's only been three county agents after that, John Estes, Ted Curl, and then myself. So in this county, there's only been five county agents in a hundred years, which is very unique. There were a number of assistant agents that worked agriculture over the time, worked 4H. Early on, you had home agents and farm agents, and the home agents were what are now the Family Consumer Science agents. And so it's been a very interesting look back in history. I think a common theme throughout the time is that Orange County's always been supportive of extension. I think that's a key why you haven't seen a lot of turnover in the county agents. It's support this county gets not only from the county government and local Board of Supervisors, but also the volunteers and the farmers and so forth we have in the county. It's a great county to work in, I've enjoyed it for over twenty-four years now, and I appreciate your support and thank you again for this. Y'all have a good day. Actually, I got a gift for you, too.
We like prizes.
You like prizes? I have some pins for you.
Hey, all of them for me?
Not all of them.
I know you like me, Steve, but come on now.
I can give you some more.
Just kidding.
Thanks, Steve.
Y'all have a good day, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, next, proclamation to declare the week of May eighteenth to the twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, as National EMS Week. A bunch of old friends up here. Yeah, you're getting up here pretty regularly, which is... All right. A proclamation to declare the week of May eighteenth to twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, as National EMS Week. EMS, dedicated for life. By the virtue of the authority invested in the Orange County Board of Supervisors, we hereby proclaim the week of May eighteenth to twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, as National EMS Week in Orange County, Virginia. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service. And whereas the chosen theme for this year's declaration is EMS, dedicated for life. And whereas throughout the county, emergency medical service professionals provide lifesaving care to those in need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, responding in a timely manner to ensure lifesaving measures for the residents and visitors in Orange County, Virginia. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survivability and recovery of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, first responders, educators, administrators, and others. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Thou, now, therefore, be it proclaimed on this thirteenth day of May, two thousand fourteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes May eighteenth to twenty-fourth, two thousand fourteen, as National EMS Week in Orange County, and urges all citizens of Orange County to join in this special observance. Signed and sealed this thirteenth day of May, two thousand four, S. Teal Goodman, Chairman. All right. I know these guys do good work, because I see them every day. Thank you. If you'd like to, go ahead.
Thank you for making me first. Just wanna thank the Board of Supervisors, the current and the previous boards, for all their support over the years through the emergency medical services in Orange County. As you know, we're a combination system now, and right now, we've got a very good combination system. We're working really well together and trying to enhance each other and make each other's jobs easier. And we're always looking for volunteers, so if anyone has any extra time, you wanna join the rescue squad, I'm sure Jack or either one of us would be more than happy to have you onboard. I've been doing this for thirty, I think thirty-three years, I don't think I'm gonna be doing it for another thirty-three. I've enjoyed every bit of it, and it's something that, it kinda grows on you, and after a while, you kinda, you think you wanna stop, but you just can't do it, so you wanna continue to serve the community and your fellow citizens. Again, we appreciate all of your support over the years and your current support. Thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate y'all.
I would also like to thank you for the eastern end of the county, for the support that y'all give us. And I'm sure you're quite aware of the financial support you give us. But there's other things, too. Just recently, I believe, we have been having an increase incident of where the career staff is becoming a more valuable source to us for training. And we hope to keep expanding on that and other things. And one other note, is you can take note of my color of my hair, also of Lee's. And the volunteers now, we're having a challenge. It's not as easy to get volunteers and keep volunteers as used to be. And I guess it's just the economy, it's life, whatever. We just can't get the committed people like we used to. You'd be able to shake a tree and it'd fall out. It's not like that anymore. So I would encourage y'all, if you, any way possible, you could expand the benefits for the volunteers. I think it'll make it a much more viable organization as we go forward in time. I don't wanna, I don't want us paid like Spotsylvania does, 'cause we're not volunteers then, but there are other things that we could use to keep people and maybe have a little more influence on them as volunteers. So I thank y'all for your consideration.
All right, okay. Thank you, guys. Resolution of appreciation to students, teachers, and principals of Prospect High School, Prospect Heights Middle School, and the Locust Grove Middle School. So we have our current teachers and future teachers. Future voters, if nothing else. Resolution of appreciation to the students, teachers, and principals of Prospect Heights Middle School and Locust Grove Middle School for the, of the student, by the student, for the student, service learning program commemorating the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Battle of the Wilderness. Whereas the sesquicentennial of the Battle of the Wilderness did occur on May third through sixth, two... This, two thousand fourteen, I wanna make sure we're, I'm not, we didn't have the battle, the real battle. Okay, the sesquicentennial occurred last week. Whereas the need to increase the awareness for citizens and visitors to the events which lead up to and occurred during the Battle of the Wilderness has been a goal of the Orange County Board of Supervisors. And whereas the Journey Through Hallowed Ground Partnership created of the student, by the student, for the student, service learning program to connect middle school students to the history found within their own communities. And whereas the principal teachers and students of Prospect Heights Middle School and Locust Grove Middle School were selected by the Journey Through Hallowed Ground Partnership and their partners, including the National Park Service, the National Endowment for the Humanities, and History, to engage in this unique service learning program. And whereas the students were invited to determine what aspects of the Battle of Wilderness they found most interesting, and were then tasked with working with primary source documents to create six mini-documentaries to share this part of Orange and American history with others. And whereas the students were entirely responsible for all aspects of the project, including research, script writing, directing, acting, prop and costume making, filming, and musical scoring. And whereas the students went on location at some of the Orange County's most historic sites, including the Fredericksburg and Spotsylvania National Military Park and the Rapidan River, adding depth and authenticity to their podcasts. And whereas the Orange County of the student, by the student, for the student project is now completed and will share this important part of Orange County history with a worldwide audience via the Journey Through Hallowed Ground website, YouTube, SchoolTube, Facebooks, and other sites. Now, therefore, be it resolved on this thirteenth day of May, two thousand fourteen, that the Orange County Board of Supervisor hereby recognizes the tremendous efforts of the students, teachers, and principals of Prospect Heights Middle School and Locust Grove Middle School for their commitment and dedication to serving the citizens of and visitors to Orange County through the of the students, by the students, for the student service learning project. Signed and sealed this day, thirteenth of May, nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, S. Teal Goodman, Chairman. All right. You did a great job, and I guess we're gonna see this, huh?
Yeah.
All right. Do we do the other one?
No, leave that one to...
Okay, all right, good. Oh, you want me to... All right. It's always good to see our kids doing something really great for us and for themselves. Make sure they'll be good voters in the next round of elections.
They have a few short remarks to give.
Okay, I'm gonna get up there and let them make the remarks to me as well.
Okay, one, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll introduce them, Jesse, if you wanna stay up here. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'm Kate McGinnis Wyatt, the founder and president of the Journey Through Hallowed Ground Partnership. I stand before you, representing an awful lot of people who have worked collaboratively to bring this program to the students, starting with our Director of Educational Programs, who's done wonderful work with all the students in both middle schools. And LeMar, from tourism, with whom not only do we work with our Destination Marketing Committee, but also has been a very important part of this program as well. We've had the great pleasure of working with the superintendent, as well as our favorite person, Linda Carlton, who has done an amazing amount of work. And then, of course, the principals from both middle schools, Principal Burke and Principal Crandall, is it?
Yep.
And then the teachers at these schools as well. We specifically would like to give a shout-out to Jennifer Connolly and to Robert Stewart. This program was created because, within the journey, we have thirteen national parks. And the superintendents have a standing committee, just like our mayors have a standing committee. And they were very concerned, because visitation to the parks by middle school students in particular was trending downwards. And at the same time, we had a request from the President's Advisory Council on Historic Preservation to create programs to engage students. So we created of the student, by the student, for the student program now five years ago, partnering with our parks, where middle school students are asked, "What do you find most interesting about this particular moment in history in your community?" And with that, they are then set off to use only primary source documents, maps, newspapers, photographs, letters, diaries, to then write scripts, act the parts, block the shots, do all the editing, the music-making, to create six vodcasts, little mini-movies, four minutes or so each, which is really hard to do. And those six mini-movies now become official National Park Service interpretive materials. They are also used by teachers around the country to teach about the history. So here we have our students, who've done such a brilliant job all year long, creating materials that not only inform us and the visitors to the park, but their peers around the country. We also have a partnership with Comcast, who will show these on demand. Our financial partners have included, as mentioned, History Channel, as well as the National Endowment for Humanities. And the commitment that the school system has made is to integrate this program every year now into the middle school curriculum, which is critically important. We will be unveiling their work at our annual meeting next week, and I have information. And we would love to have you as our guests. It will be held at that University of No Name, in the Academical Village. May twenty-second, we are doing the unveiling. Twenty-first? Oh, yeah, I saw it right, my bad. Yeah, May twenty-first. So if you would like to attend and be our guest, we certainly would love to have you with us. And I'd like Jesse to introduce the students to you.
Thank you, members of the board. We have a few words to share with you today, specifically from three of our participating students and of the student, by the student, for the student. All three of these individuals are from Locust Grove Middle School down the road. And they've been working on a project focusing on the United States colored troops, specifically a gentleman who fought with the twenty-third Ohio by the name of Nimrod Burke. So I'd like to introduce you guys to TJ...
Lucy.
And Jean, who'll get to share a few words of their own experience with the project.
Hello. We did, with the Journey Through Hallowed Grounds Partnership, we did the story of Nimrod Burke, African-Americans Fight for Freedom. And what we experienced was, during this outstanding project with the Journey Through Hallowed Grounds, we inquired a great amount of knowledge on the Civil War and the history that has occurred in our own backyards we didn't already know about. We learned much about the elements needed to make a professional movie. And we also increased our teamwork skills and had a lot of fun doing it.
Wyatt is important to us. This was a very important, because we appreciate our history even more, like how hard African-Americans fought to actually earn their freedom. We also found out much history has impacted our lives today and has opened our eyes to the past.
Wyatt is important today. We live in a very technological world today, so why not use that technology to encourage and excite others, to make their own videos even, and to use the technology that's available to us to create knowledge from this project. And it is a wonderful opportunity to hand over our broadcast to the National Park Service so they can show other people and get them excited about learning history the fun way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very good job. We're really not, we don't like. Okay. Next, then, we move on to public comment. Anyone signed up, Allison?
No, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, in that case, we move to board comments. Is there any board comments?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment. In support of these young people that were doing it, I got a chance to see last weekend another activity that reflected our young people. Fourth graders, the Civil War Study Group, the Lake of the Woods, sponsored a poster contest for the fourth graders throughout the county. And they came up with some really, really good posters. I mean, there were probably about forty, forty out of a hundred forty were displayed there at the, at the... Uh, another one, uh, did a, a, uh, history, uh, poster on, uh, Bell, the Confederate spy, uh, that, and that was a nice one done. And another one did on the, uh, the ship, the Susan Castanzo, that talked about, uh, people bringing the first, uh, groups over here to Virginia. So it was very interesting that the, uh, that the fourth graders were doing things, not quite as sophisticated as what these boy, kids have done, but, uh, again, uh, I sort of wanted to congratulate them for their efforts.
Sorry, I just wanna, um, I'll remind everybody again at our next meeting, but, um, you know, several months ago, we had Craig Hartman in here from the Barbecue Exchange, um, doing, during the Business Spotlight, but he is actually going to be, is it Man, Chew, Fire is the name of the show?
Man, Fire Food.
Man, Fire Food, it's on June third, on the Cooking Channel. So, um, the, the guy on that show is gonna eat their hell on a bun and, um,
Hell sandwich, yeah.
And they, um, interviewed Craig, so I think it's their, their first show for the season. So, um, Craig from Gordonsville, our little Gordonsville, Virginia, will be on, um, the Cooking Channel that night. So I'll remind everybody at the next meeting too.
We were there, we were there the day of the taping, so his reaction to eating that sandwich is quite unique, saying, everyone should definitely see it.
Uh, just a couple of things. One, I just want to say that our entire school system is doing so well because I know when I was in school, it didn't have electricity yet, kids. When, when I was in school, uh, public speaking was for maybe a half of, of one percent of the student body. No one else would ever get up and do any public speaking. And it seems like on a regular basis, we have students come in here and perform as, at the level that you did, doing public presentations. And I just wanna say for our entire school system, that's very admirable, because so many students across the country cannot speak very well at all, much less public speaking. So, very good. One other, uh, note, we do not have to worry about the bypass coming into Orange County unless we would like it to. Uh, as stated by, uh, the Spotsylvania, uh, Chairman of the Board last night, it is dead in the water. So, we don't have to worry about any more, uh, incorrect press or bad press about us trying to get that in here without, uh, any type of proper plan. So, just wanted to make everybody aware of that, we spoke last night.
Do you have anything?
No.
All right, well, I'll do the one final and then, uh, for those who haven't read or didn't know, I just wish to extend condolences to the Mayor of Fredericksburg, whose husband we married yesterday, it's my cousin, and, um, apparently got up in the middle of the night a week ago, fell and hit his head and never woke up again, so. Anyway, uh, condolences to Mary Catherine and her family.
I guess we also probably, um, should make remarks since it's, um, public now that, um, Dr. Remesey, um, is, is leaving and, um, will be sorely and gravely missed, as the way I, um, explained him today to someone, he started pushing a big boulder up a hill, and I hope the momentum doesn't stop because the boulder hadn't made it quite to the top of the hill yet, and, um, so somebody's got some mighty big powerful shoes to fill, to fill, um, in him leaving. So it, I think a lot of people, I've been, Facebook's been blowing up today with people saddened by him leaving, and I think it was Judy Carter's fault. No, it's not.
He said you somebody was wrong.
He said you working him too hard, Judy. Just kidding. No, it's not.
If I can say just some briefly about that, it, it, this really was a struggle for him because he loves Orange County. Most people here know where we were five years ago before he came, and five short years, he has taken us, as you so well put it, uh, with a boulder. And the, the board, um, after accepting his resignation, one of the first things we said was that we want to keep on that momentum, momentum, big shoes to fill, but, um, we'll get there, we'll get there. But thank you for everything that you have done for him. Um, you know, he has blossomed by the respect that you have given him, you know, over the period of time, and he will, I'm sure, pass that on to you on his own path. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. All right, with that then we'll move on to the action items. The Resolution endorsing the rail preservation grant application, Buckingham Branch Railroad. Amy Wilson?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman invited Mr. Wilson up, but, uh, you have been asked to, uh, support their grant application, if you want Mr. Wilson to come up and make a few more comments. Uh, the resolution and things are in your package, so afterwards that.
You've got an interesting website.
Thank you. We, uh, it took us a couple of years to get to that point, but, uh, we still got some improvements to do. First of all, thank you all for, uh, inviting me here, and, uh, also thank you for consideration in, uh, in our resolution. Uh, this is something that, uh, that we do every year. I'm sure the ones that you've been on the board for several years have, uh, seen them in the past, and, uh, we send out about twenty of these each year. It's, uh, it's a program that we participate in with the state, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that, uh, that you might have, uh, uh, before you vote on it.
I saw on your website that, uh, you're connected with Amtrak. Is that, uh, is that still active?
Yes, the, uh, the Amtrak Cardinal operates on our line. It actually comes on Buckingham Branch here at Orange. Uh, it goes from Orange to Gordonsville, up through Charlottesville, excuse me, and it exits our property at Clifton Ford. And that's, it's unique because the Cardinal runs both ways, east and west, and, uh, one originates in New York, the other one in Chicago, and they actually meet on our property here somewhere around Crowe's Day or Charlottesville. So, uh, not only does Amtrak operate on us, we have the distinction of them meeting on us each time they operate, so that's a dispatching opportunity also. But they do operate three days a week, uh, two trips, and they have done that since, uh, Buckingham Branches. But we've been here about eleven years, and Amtrak was here when we took over or leased the CSX property, and, uh, they're still here. There was some talk a couple of years ago, uh, about extending that, but the, uh, the feasibility studies due to ridership, uh, did not dictate that that be increased to five or seven day, uh, schedule.
There's also, I didn't realize how much, uh, mining activity occurred in the area until I realized how much you were shipping, uh, from the various mining, uh, uh, facilities.
Well, we are involved with, uh, coal trains. Uh, our involvement with them though is the empty trains, if you've been at Gordonsville, uh, and saw the main line, they do not come up the Orange Branch, but they start in the coal mines in West Virginia or Ohio, they go down the Rylanda River to the ports and unload, CSX handles that. After they unload at the ports, then those trains are routed back through us, they make a circle. CSX is lying on the river, it's only one main line, and they can't handle traffic both ways, so the empty trains come back through here. So our railroad that we lease from CSX is vital in that export operation for the ports of Virginia.
Is that the Chedford for the ports down there?
Yes, it is. And, and those trains, they, they operate, uh, we average about, uh, six and a half or seven a day, that's twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, fifty-two weeks a year. Uh, it slows down a little bit during Christmas and Thanksgiving holidays, some guys take off, but, uh, that's about the only time.
You still have a lot of those tours with the National Railway Historic, uh, group?
The only ones that we do, uh, with the Historical Railroad Group is in Dillon. Uh, we have three, we operate three railroads in the state of Virginia. The original was at Dillon, it's been there, this is our twenty-fifth year Dillon. This piece that runs from Richmond to Clifton, it's eleven years since we've had it, and we have, uh, another railroad in the southern part, I heard a, uh, earlier speaker mention Berkville, that's where we're at, Berkville to Keysville to Clarksville, and we've had that operation for about five years. Now, the only excursion train that we operate is in Dillon, and it, it just ran the last two weekends, and then we'll do a fall excursion train, and we have the Santa Claus train too. So. And, and, and I, just, just as a quick comment, Orange County, we only have ten miles from Gordonsville up here, but even though it's only ten miles, it's important to us. We have, uh, uh, Orange-Madison Co-op up here, and we also have Coppers, and Amtrak operates on that ten-mile piece too. And one of the things I wanted to, uh, just, just, uh, mention briefly, I know you're all busy, I don't wanna take up your lot of time, but we just finished, uh, installing three thousand ties this week on this ten-mile section, and, uh, that was from a resolution on FYI two thousand and thirteen that we received grants from the Department of Rail. So these resolutions, even though they're passed this year, that money may not be spent for one or two years ahead because we put these projects in order priority to, to repair the tracks. And we like to think that, that your all's support also comes about because we have rail here, and that's a, a tremendous marketing tool for your economic development. We like to see you grow from an economic standpoint, and hopefully we get some of the benefit of that too, to move cars and keep trucks off the road.
Well, some move.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, just so you know, uh, Commissioner and I exchanged some emails, uh, this afternoon, and, uh, we thought it best that we'll arrange for, uh, Mr. Eames, uh, the principal of the company, to come brief you all on the upcoming reassessment, probably the last meeting in June or the first meeting in July. Uh, they are due to start their work in August.
August fifteenth.
August fifteenth. So, um, one, to, uh, inform the board, but also to give the public kind of some notice that, that this process is beginning, uh, because it, it, it does involve, uh, quite a, quite a bit of outreach, so to speak, to, to the county's, uh, property owners.
Property next door to me, sold for about thirty, forty percent more than assessed value. I know you're all sympathetic.
Next we have a request for various safety signage on Goldale Road.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, we, uh, staff had spoke with a, a citizen last week concerning safety concerns on Route Four, six oh four, Goldale Road. Um, essentially, there's, uh, a lot of, uh, a lot of high volume of travelers, uh, excessive speeds, accidents, uh, and the person that called, uh, has been impacted, uh, by, because of the crashes that occurred in front of her house, uh, I guess uncomfortably so, close to her house, and is asking, uh, this board to, uh, request VDOT to look at, uh, installing some, uh, appropriate or additional safety signage, and that's, I think in your, uh, in your agenda package certainly is, I think, the most recent accident and what it did to her, like a vinyl fence out there, um, so that would be the recommendation.
That's on that will page, correct?
It's a couple of years ago that, uh, I don't think it was on this segment, we tried to get a speed reduction on another segment, and VDOT did buy off on it.
This is a, there's a, there's one curve there in particular that's, that's sharp, but you can't see it from either direction until you're right on top of it, and so some kind of a warning, at, at least about that is, I think is.
Sharp curve ahead.
Uh, something, because it, and, and if I recall, the road is, is sloped in the wrong direction, so it's throwing you out of the curve instead of where you wanna go, so it, it's not a, not a good situation.
Some move.
Motion to second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries by zero. All right, uh, so indeed, this position of circular property.
As you know, this was a late item on, on agenda because of the timing.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you, but let me add this to the, to the agenda of, uh, Mr. Davis said this was a late item just due to the timing of when we removed the equipment and when we found out that the e-waste, um, recycling program was being this Saturday, so I appreciate, um, I appreciate that. Um, two weeks ago, the nine-one-one center completed the cutover to the new nine-one-one phone system. With that being said, the old equipment has been removed and pulled out. At this time of requesting, since this equipment is end of life, um, and it is, um, obsolete and can no longer be used in Orange County in, in any way, that we do, uh, two things with it. Um, there are two counties, uh, King George County as well as, uh, sorry, King George County and the city of Fredericksburg, who are still running the old vesta system, and, um, I did talk to them and ask them, um, to see if they would want any spare parts, uh, since for us it's obsolete, and they requested some headset jacks and some phone items and a little bit of software. Um, so we're asking to give some of the equipment to them as a donation to kind of repay the favor or pay it forward, like it has been done so many times with us in Orange. And then the second part is that any of the old PCs, um, equipment that is absolutely obsolete wiring, um, be sent to the e-waste, uh, collection, um, uh, this Saturday.
Some move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Sure you don't wanna keep some of our historical memorabilia to fill up your rooms, huh?
I was gonna say, look, in all that spare space they got back there.
We, we actually do have the original radio equipment still, it's sitting in a closet, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, next, let's see, what needs to be boards, commissions, and committees? Nothing? Okay. We move on to discussion items, discussion item, A, introduction of state budget contingency.
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I appreciate you adding this to tonight's meeting. Um, as you know, there is no adopted state budget at this time. Um, all indications that the parties, meaning the General Assembly, the Senate, the House, and the Governor, are, um, not talking, uh, not communicating, um.
At odds.
At odds, uh, and this all has to do with Medicaid expansion, and if I can, can just kind of briefly delve in what the stalemate's about as I understand it. The state budgets between the Senate version and the House version and that which was introduced by Governor McDonald for the, the caboose budget, that's, that's been taken care of. This is the biennial budget that, uh, Governor McDonald put forward for the state's, uh, new biennium. Other than Medicaid expansion, the budgets are essentially reconciled, uh, in, in, in what they're fifty, sixty, I forget how many billion dollar budget for state biennium, they're not far off, and they can resolve in a matter of, of, uh, just a one meeting, a couple hours. Um, there are various scenarios that are now being played out in the press, uh, whether the Governor can unilaterally, uh, accept the federal dollars without the General Assembly's appropriation. Finance Director and I did a little parlor game on, could I accept money and disperse that without you all's approval? I could probably take the money in, but for dispersing it, I need you all's.
You might do it once.
Well, as, as a practical matter, as a practical matter, I wouldn't, yeah, as a practical matter, I definitely would do it once. And, and there's, uh, so anyhow, uh, that parlor game didn't get very far out, I'll add. Um, and, and whether they get this to be resolved or not is, we hope it gets resolved because essentially about half the state budget is money that is, is, is dispersed, transferred to local governments. And, um, last week, uh, at our, uh, kind of our, our department heads, constitutional officers, where we all gather in this room at eight-thirty on the first Tuesday of every month to talk about things that are kind of organization-wide, one of the, one of the things I- Other than Medicaid expansion, the budgets are essentially reconciled, uh, in, in, in what they're fifty, sixty, I forget how many billion dollar budget for state biennium, they're not far off and they can resolve in a matter of, of, uh, just one meeting, couple hours. Um, there are various scenarios that are now being played out in the press, uh, whether the governor can unilaterally, uh, accept the federal dollars without the General Assembly's appropriation. Uh, Finance Director and I did a little parlor game on, could I accept money and disperse that without you all's approval? I could probably take the money in, but for dispersing it, I need you all's.
You might do it once.
Well, as a, as a practical matter, as a practical matter, I wouldn't, yeah, as a practical matter, I definitely would do it once. And, and there's, uh, so anyhow, uh, that parlor game didn't get very far out, I'll add. Um, and, and whether they get this to be resolved or not is, we hope it gets resolved because essentially about half the state budget is money that is, is, is dispersed, transferred to local governments. And, um, last week, uh, at our, uh, kind of our, our department heads, constitutional officers, where we all gather in this room at eight thirty on the first Tuesday of every month to talk about things that are kind of organization wide. One of the, one of the things I posed to everybody assembled, um, you know, what does it mean, uh, for the state not to do money, uh, to provide the money? Two, what should be some priorities to, to, uh, any contingency plans we put together? And, uh, had a, had a good discussion and certainly, uh, all the constitutional office, because of the compensation board have impact. Our, our revenue side has some impact too and I'm gonna walk you through some information that we have, um, today for your, your consumption and maybe some, some discussion. We don't have a contingency pad, let me underscore that, we haven't come up with one. We will have one for your next meeting, uh, this month. Um, certainly gonna work very closely with the treasurer and the finance director and the other constitutional officers as well as other entities that may be affected by this impasse, uh, of, of what do we do? But one of the things that, uh, certainly was a priority consensus, uh, agreement, it wasn't even a consensus, uh, between the constitutional officers and certainly from my perspective, where I sit is that anything that we can do to not disrupt the salaries and benefits of employees, whether they receive their, their salaries or benefits wholly from state funds as part of our budget or in part, uh, is the first priority. And, and how we get there is what we'll, um, we'll talk about in, in a bit, but that was certainly a, a, at the top. I, I will also say that there's significant, significant impacts on the non-personnel side, particularly all the tax revenues that are state, collected at the state, sales tax being the leading one and, and what that means. Um, I had a con, uh, exchanged voicemails with Bob Lingo, uh, the Director of Social Services. As you know, they're not on our, uh, our, our pay plan and, and, uh, and not part of our, our payroll system, so how their money flows in and out of local monies is a little bit different. Um, his best advice to me is that the State Department of S- uh, Social Services is looking back to two thousand and six, the last time this happened, uh, for some guidance and that guidance to his office from the state is forthcoming. He also said that if they remembered last time, they developed these IOUs, meaning you all as the board, we presented an IOU from the Department of Social Services at the state to keep the local office whole and that they would pay you back. That's the essentially upstart. So, um, uh, how you craft your conditions of that approval are up to you. That's one, one thing with social services, so that's, that's a, that's gonna be a work in, in, in progress. I'll certainly use the opportunity to talk to, to social services about, uh, combined, uh, payroll systems and how we could, you know, this would help certainly kind of ascertaining a lot of this, this situation in, in, in the immediate, uh, matter. The next point that I want to cover with you all is, uh, that your fund balance policy that you adopted in two thousand and eleven, being an important tool, there are two reasons why you did that. Let me just state for, for, for those here in the meeting. The first is to establish a sufficient reserve to meet your cash flow requirements. As you know, the county's money generally peaks in the spring and peaks in the fall, late fall, early winter. Between that, we're funding all of the county operations, so that's why you need a, a good reserve. Two, it shows your creditworthiness when we go to the bond market. And third, and let me restate, let me state this, to make available cash to meet the county's expenditure obligations during emergency. I would certainly, in my opinion, declare this an emergency if the state did not have any funds coming to us and, and, and I'm gonna ask Glenda to kind of walk, walk you through a spreadsheet that she has prepared. Um, there are also a number of local organizations, uh, that receive state funds to fund their operation in addition to local funds. You just recognized one of those operations today, the cooperative extension. Uh, and so, uh, we can start talking about jails, we can talk about the Health Department. Uh, there are a number of these state functions that, uh, we provide money on, on various draws of monthly, once a time a year, depends on, on the number. So they're going to be impacted as well. And, and some of those are providing services to the same residents and citizens that we serve here, a cooperative extension and such. Um, and, and the last point that I'll, I'll make is that we're going to start a, a series of contingency plans, um, or plan, uh, and maybe some priorities, uh, to present at your May twenty-seventh meeting. Um, and, and, and the idea is really, you know, what do we need to do to, uh, to manage our cash flows so that we can keep undisrupted people's salaries, uh, and benefits? And then two, what other significant operations that state funds are, if they're not forthcoming, maybe making some priorities of how we, how we, uh, use local dollars to backstop uh, those situations. On the other side, we're gonna have some holes in our revenue stream that we need to factor in too. Um, and, and, and so we're kind of getting it coming and going, uh, with that. Um, with that, I'll ask Glenda if you could come forward, um, and just kind of walk the board through the spreadsheet and, and get you some, some, I told her we didn't need to be so detailed for tonight's discussion, but in her efforts to always overachieve, uh, she got to the bottom line pretty quickly, so.
Before you do that, let me ask you a question. Since I'm looking at what you're talking about having left in October, is that taking into account the social services? Or is that tagged, tagged on to it?
That, that, the social services, uh, state funding is in here. Um, if you look under categorical aid, it's like the third from the last one. What is not on this sheet, and I talked to, um, Brian about it earlier, is the federal funding that's a state passed through. And so that would, you know, add another whole layer to this thing which would really, um, you know, we would get down to.
So you're assuming, you're assuming we get the money through the, the, from the feds?
In this scenario, but.
Well, it's assuming there's anybody at the social services to actually do the bookwork to do it. We're assuming that the state shuts down, there's nobody there at Department of Taxation.
Oh, okay.
So that nebulous place that Ms. Pace discussed where we hide all this money, um.
Keeps us going pretty much.
I really don't see a damn thing left if, uh, the state doesn't get themselves together. So I find it quite some nebulous.
Right. Well, across the top of the, uh, spreadsheet, I focused on, uh, personnel since that was our, our highest priority was, um, keeping our personnel whole. And of course, most of those offices are constitutional officers. Um, but I did also include, um, the CSA program and the strengthening families grant. We have a few people that are paid from that grant. And all that money is coming from the state. So over on the far right, you can see, um, the annual state reimbursements that we expect in the FY fifteen budget and then the state versus the funding ratios and also the monthly need for backfill, backfill of those salary and benefits. Um, coming down to the next section is just repeating that amount that would be needed to backfill for personnel expenses. Um, that remains steady each month and I'm, I just used four months since we don't know how long this might last, but, um, as, uh, Chairman Goodman was saying, when you get to the end of October, uh, we can't go another month and, and continue to operate at this, at our current service levels. Um.
Just, so. Will we borrow money at that point in time or just shut down?
That would be up to you, but I mean, you know, there are such things as revenue anticipation notes.
And things, uh, just, just so we know that what we're talking about in order for the personnel expenses, no disruption, is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a month. So at a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a click, we've offset the hole that the state would leave for not having a budget.
Can we, uh, defer our VRS payments? I mean, because that's not having an immediate impact.
Especially since there's gonna be no one there to take the money.
Good point. I haven't heard that.
I mean, it would seem one way, it doesn't have an impact on, I mean, you need to keep their health insurance going, you need to keep their paychecks going. Uh, and I guess we, and I guess the feds probably would be a little upset if we didn't give them their, uh, their taxes and FICA and all that sort of stuff.
Right.
And since there's an employee, an employer shared a VRS, do we collect that and just hold that in escrow, so to speak, before we can transmit it and things? These are some of the details that I'd rather not have to work.
Underst-
But we're gonna start that process.
And of course, this would also mean that, uh, that, uh, we're not starting school in September. Because that's the big hunk. I'm just, just trying to figure, I mean, this just deals with, with the county budget.
Well, I do list the schools, um, a little further down. Um, first I went through non-categorical aid and of course, these revenues from the state come in on different schedules. Um, some of them we don't, we wouldn't expect to receive until the following spring anyway. Um, but you can see that the ones that are on quarterly dispersments, um, we could theoretically be looking at two quarters here, um, the dispersment in July and then one in October. Um, the PPTR, uh, the, which is car tax relief from the state, we're scheduled to receive a hundred and thirty-eight thousand in August. Um, that's, uh, heavily loaded toward the second half of the year. Um, coming on down that list, I, I've got our categorical aid, um, down there. You can see the library is one of those quarterly dispersments. Um, recordation taxes, uh, the CSA program, uh, the Department of, of Social Services, airport grants, and of course, that's just a function, the timing there is always a function of, um, the projects that are underway. And that's also something we could, um, theoretically, uh, control as far as postponing some of those projects. The local taxes collected by the state, uh, could also be impacted and the big one of those, of course, is sales tax, um, which is about two and a half million dollars a year. And I base these monthly amounts just on the most recent year. And then the Orange County Public Schools, uh, because we, we have, um, reached out to the superintendent and, um, Matt at the schools about meeting. I don't know, he may further refine this, but I took their full state amount of money and, um, did it equally um, over twelve months to come up with this two point one million.
You know, I apologize if I skipped over one of my bullets. We were, uh, we were scheduled to meet with them on May twenty-seventh, Matt and, and, and Bob, to start planning for next year's budget, which now is gonna take a real twist, um, a- as far as local, local support for schools for next year, uh, cycle. Uh, because of this is such a priority and prior to, to, to the superintendent's announcement, we were actually going to meet separately like next week. We're gonna carve our schedule times out and all four of us get down and start planning contingency. I know that they're holding back on contracts because they have to have their state funds and they're actually in violation. If I understand the way the state law works is they can't send out contracts until they know what their state funds are, but since they don't know what their state funds are, they can't send out their contracts by the time that they were supposed to. And so the, the idea is that they'll be doing this, uh, at some point, uh, once the state resolves it. Obviously not being in session has some advantages, uh, to the schools, but they still have bills to pay, they still have a number of things going on, particularly with all their twelve month employees and twelve month employees. So, and then there are a number of ten month employees that receive their paychecks on a twelve month cycle. So they still get paid in the summertime just as they got paid during the schoo- school year. And we'll, we'll kind of.
So that's factored into this?
Yeah, that, it's an all in number.
Okay, all right. So we're, we're covering the school teachers that are getting paid on a regular basis, okay?
And, uh, the way I estimated the available cash balances was just taking the same four, um, cash accounts and investment accounts that we use, uh, for the quarterly report, which are, uh, the ones that are available for ongoing operations. And I, um, adjusted those for, uh, the additional revenue that we expect to receive from the June fifth property tax billing due to the increase in rates. And, um, adjusted for the, um, the loss of the state funding. And then, of course, that has a cumulative effect. So as you go out each month, you're not only missing the monthly amount, you're missing the month before and then the month before that.
So you didn't figure giving anything to the jail or these other partner agencies?
No. And I just listed those so we could.
Above what our obligations are, above what our obligations.
Yeah, I mean, you, you're figuring our, our, our normal payments on the jail and et cetera, but not, uh.
Not if they come and ask for assistance from the county, uh, with covering what the state.
Is it this our portion?
For the partner agencies, no, that, those are the amounts that, um, of state funding that those agencies receive.
I think, and check on this to see if I'm wrong, but I think corrections is the only thing that continues to get funded.
I would imagine.
I think there, there is, there is a, there is a.
Statute that forces that?
There's state police and, and corrections.
Well, it, I mean, because.
Otherwise you got chaos.
I mean, you get to.
Then we need that.
Well, I mean, you get to the point, end of the thing, regardless if you have people there working, you, you have people that you've incarcerated that, so we might find that. I, I, I think there's something about that and I think.
Sort of a statutory continuing resolution for that?
I, 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 and I don't know, I don't, I mean, I remember one time being told something like that and then, but I don't know how it trickles down to jails and, um.
And I think the governor has certain extraordinary police powers with budget if there's to ensure public safety, essentially can do most anything. Um, I think.
Yeah, at least he'll continue it at, uh, at the current, current funding rates.
I think reasonable minds would come together to say, if we can't do everything on the budget, let's do public safety or, or, or maybe local government aid and, and adopt those portions of the budget and then move us on. So I, I, I think Bazzas is right, there's public safety issue at least, uh, at the state level and the fact that we have facility here.
I think, I think the general thing is that they, they don't get their academic.
Our, our ability to carry their water for a while is, is finite.
Yeah.
The other thing, just so you know, that this doesn't come, this is not free. Uh, you will be having a, a proposal made to you all at the twenty-seventh meeting about long-term investments, what to do with, uh, the commis-, uh, excuse me, the treasurer, Ms. Yancey's investments of your funds that aren't used, you know, with cash flow. And we've got a, while the interest that our time valued funds now is not great, there's actually another product out there that's coming through, Virginia Municipal League and, and Bay Corp that, that may get us a little bit, little bit more ahead. If we have to start using our cash and we can't invest it in long-term yields, when we've got a park because of this, we've actually lost money because of the time value.
And that was, that was part of our estimated revenues.
Exactly. And, and so we're actually having, and, and we've had some preliminary discussions of if we move to this new product, how much would we do? That's already cost us money just by doing this, this, this exercise. So the state doing this has real dollar impact, maybe not great, but it still has a real dollar impact.
In our case, it is great. Even the smallest amounts are great with what we're accomplishing.
So barring anything, we'll come back, you know, pipe payroll and people's salaries and benefits priority and, uh, I think the board, at least the sense of the board is that, that should be our priority.
Yeah.
And then what else we do, I think we'll be better informed on the school side when we meet with them and I can certainly, uh, let, let you all know what we might be able to do to, to, to work through that process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Billy. Uh, moving on then to my, uh, feed, uh, the project of Spectra Energy.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as you know, I, uh, had sent an email out to the board making them aware I had been contacted by an attorney with Huntley Williams about, uh, ten days ago, I guess it was, representing a company called Spectra Energy Partners LP. This company, uh, the attorney for Huntley Williams is representing them. This company is responding to an RFP, a request for. This company is responding to an RFP, a request proposals, put out by Duke Energy. And the idea is that Duke Energy is soliciting, uh, proposals from qualified companies to build a pipeline running from, uh, shale oil gas fields in mid, mid Pennsylvania, mid central Pennsylvania, down into North Carolina, presumptively to provide natural gas to fire up natural gas, uh, power plants. The alignment, uh, brings that pipeline through Orange County and pretty much District One. Their intent when contacting me, now we don't know of any other co-, any other companies out there, Spectra's the only one that's contacted us. In the attempt to at least get word out to local officials that this is coming, should their constituents, property owners, give call about receiving letters requesting permission to go survey the property. And so, uh, Ms. Abs thought it would be good, and I certainly agree, is to bring this to the public kind of portion of the meeting and, and, and make everybody aware of what's going on. I know the county attorney can speak to what this means because this is a federal energy regulatory commission project and how that may or may not affect you all's oversight on it, so.
Question, I see you provided, um, a copy of the letter. Do you have the original letter that was sent to them?
No, ma'am.
Well, we do now. Just the, the, the problem with this particular letter that the feedback I had received is a line that says, "We have begun meeting with your community leaders and elected officials." Well, they haven't begun meeting with us, they haven't even really talked to us other than, you know, you had a brief phone call and a follow-up email that basically said no more than what this letter is. So, um, you know, the few people that I've, I've talked to about it is, you know, how can you all have been talking to them?
And not let me know?
And, and, you know, what have you said to them, you know? And, and I was like, I haven't talked to anybody, let, let me tell you, you've gotten just as much information as, as we've gotten. So the fact that they, um, misrepresented themselves, that, that they have met with their elected officials, they, no, they have not met with their elected officials, they haven't talked to me and, or any of you all, so, um...
I'm not sure implying state federal.
Well, I don't care what they're implying, you know, I just read to you the sentence, you know, we've begun, and, and it just, when they read it, they're thinking, they're thinking us regardless of...
Oh, I would represent myself as a ca- county official, the only conversation was with the attorney, um, and the emails. And beyond that, you all know exactly as much as I know.
Yeah, and, and that, so I mean, I think that's the, that's the problem because it, it looks like, you know, they get this in the mail and then I'm assuming they've gotten, although it doesn't say the date, it's just a little blank. So I don't know when they get this and, um...
So, I, I guess, at least...
And what happens if the landowner says, "No, you can't come survey on my land"?
That may be a good kind of the regulatory process.
Well, yeah, I mean, this is, from what I can tell, step one in what would be a very long-term process. I mean, they've got environmental impact statements they've gotta do, they've got all kinds of hoops to jump. So this is the very first, from what I can tell, the little bit of information I have, this is a first step in a fairly long process. I mean, they would have some potential condemnation tools they could use.
What's really funny is they would have to go across Montpelier. Cause the landowner I got this from is lined up with Montpelier, so... That's why I was a few minutes late here tonight, going by to pick a copy of this letter, I, 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 yeah.
So I'm not sure how much of this is, some of this is designed to see how much squeal and feedback they get as, as part of their preliminary planning process, but...
Well, I'm thinking Montpelier got one of these letters, there's gonna be some squeal.
Well, we get the trail.
That's right.
Just grind right out and you don't need to pay for it.
But there's a lot of steps involved in constructing something like this, and there's a lot of federal agencies and departments involved, so...
And apparently, this is, this is just one of several proposals, this is not the only proposer.
Right, Duke Energy, I think, is given toward, you know, end of the summer or something like that, just to get qualified firms to say, "We're qualified and here's how we go about it."
I agree with you, I think it's to see the path of least resistance. Good luck with District One is all I'm gonna say.
Glad it's in your end of the county.
Well, I don't care, hey, if it was in your end of the county, it'd be the, it'd be the same group law.
Well, the flip side, there's very little we could do to stop it.
I think that, if they were putting it through our end of the county, I'm not sure I would get a lot of positive response.
And, and understand, there's gonna be little, very little we could do to stop it if that is the, the direction it goes. There's not gonna be a whole lot we can do.
There are two lines running through the county now.
Pretty much, yeah.
I just wish we'd got the pumping station.
Yeah, we'll get the pipeline, but no, you won't get the natural gas from it.
Yeah, this, this won't have any on, off ramps, uh, in, in the county because of, of probably the pressures and the pipeline.
High pressure, it needs, uh...
Be built for Duke, and so, uh, the other part is, as the county attorney said, this is what they, I think, per federal preemption under, because it's a federal energy regulatory commission for process.
Although, although the feds, uh, they take a lot of heat on power lines and things like that, so, I mean, there's, there's some, uh, you know, if there's a coordinated, uh, uh, negative reaction on it, that, that they can, they'll change things around.
Absolutely, and I would certainly think the board would wanna have input to the process and, and things.
Probably take a little more than District One.
So, uh, the other part is that these, these facilities are taxable, uh, to the county. They're appraised or assessed by the, uh, State Corporation Commission, but they pay all local levies at the rates for real estate, uh, business, personal property, those kind of things. So that, beyond that, um, I, I will, uh, get a copy of that letter. I'll certainly, uh, talk to the attorney about, uh, clearly that, that line has caused, uh, as concern, it gives concern to the board and pause, uh, because of what it represents.
Yeah, if this is, if this is how they're gonna do business, uh, in terms of this kind of misrepresentation, they don't make it a very good start.
Not impressed thus far.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions on the information items? Uh, committee reports. Alright, well, let's talk about calendar.
I have a question on the first one, um... Wasn't clear to me, and I only saw the press reports on that one, but it didn't sound like the planning commission had finished their work on that. Is that, what is the...
The planning commission has finished, and I don't know if we've gotten these letters yet.
Yeah, I've gotten it, yeah.
Apparently, VOF says...
Yeah, which surprised me, the planning commission, this was, this is a property that's in conservation easement. And so at the planning commission stage, and they're, you know, doing this, uh, special events, weddings, et cetera. And the copy of the conservation easement seemed to prohibit that, but we weren't sure. And so, we asked for, the planning commission approved it subject to whatever VOF said. After the planning commission, VOF sent the letter saying they didn't object, they didn't feel like it was in violation of conservation easement. So the planning commission basically recommended approval.
Okay, but can I ask another dumb question? Why do we care what a conservation easement has?
It's not us caring, it's a matter of can we legally have that involvement?
But we don't legally have any involvement in conservation easement.
There's a, there's a screwy state code section, I didn't bring it with me today, there's a screwy str- state code section that probably does imply, but it's a, it's a little ambiguous, and it talks about approving, uh, projects in violation of a conservation easement. I think it's probably addressing the holder of the easement, but it doesn't say that. And one of the things it says is that there has to be a determination that it, a, a change or allowing something to happen to conservation easement is compliance with a comprehensive plan and in the best interest of the lo- of the county. And so, I'm not sure if we have to determine that, if the holder of the easement, which seems kind of odd that the holder of the easement would determine whether it matches our comprehensive plan. So the, the state code section's a little fuzzy, so my advice was, let's find out what VOF says, and if they don't care, then it sails or we don't have to worry about it. And VOF sent the letter the following week, said they don't care. So there we go.
And there was quite a bit of discussion in the commission, I think, actually did a very good job in their discussion. Coming up with the way they did it, they worked well together.
What we didn't want is a situation where VOF says this is illegal, we are, it's a violation of easement, and then you get this code section, like I said, it's a real funny written code section, you know? When the General Assembly doesn't always write things well.
Really? Shocked.
Good job of sitting down.
Well, and this is gonna sound funny to you, but the problem is there aren't enough lawyers up there anymore. It used to be, this is true, it used to be...
I'd choose a different word than funny, but...
There, there may not be as many.
Well, it used to be eighty percent of the General Assembly was attorneys, it's under twenty percent now. And on some committees, there are no attorneys at all. And so what you're getting is poorly drafted legislation more and more, because, you know, the lawyers, lawyers first thinks houses can be applied, what's it, in the real world, what's it gonna look like, and, and a lot of laypeople don't do that.
They don't have, uh, the committees don't have their own lawyers?
Apparently not, or if they do, they got incompetent ones. Some of the stuff that passes is scary.
Okay, well, I'm fine with all those, are y'all fine with all those?
I have no problem. You're good?
I'm good.
Those three of us are good, y'all good?
Yeah.
Okay. Make it seven. Done? Okay, at that point then, I guess we will go ahead and go into recess for dinner and move on.
Alright, and then come back for the, uh, Shrek report.
Alright, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. One matter concerning the discussion of personnel which concerns a specific employee in consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body in consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. And whereas pursuant to sections two point two, thirty-seven, eleven, A one and A seven of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting, therefore be resolved. The Board of Supervisors of Orange County hereby authorize discussion for said matters in closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.